...kind of crowd here to see me or any of the other council members. I know they're not here to see the attorney, but we always get a good turnout for things that appear under the mayor's report as they will today. Thank you for joining us today for the council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Submove.
By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. Any discussion? All in favor of suspending the rules? It's approved on a four oh vote. The clerk would note that Mr. Guines is not present, Ms. Newman's not present, and Mr. Glavine is not present. If the clerk would read the revisions to the agenda, please.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5D, resolution authorizing reduction of facility rental fees for Second Line Mardi Gras Club.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Move the agenda as amended.
By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. McGilvery, is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor. It's approved on a four oh vote. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, you're up to bat.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and it's Mardi Gras time. Welcome, everybody. And I think we've got the Hunt ladies in charge of the first order of business. So we, Martha and Susan, we ready?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mayor Gillich, City Council and citizens, my name is Martha Tripp, and I'm the chairperson, whoop, I gotta use this. I'm the chairperson of the Shoebox Float Contest, the twenty-sixth annual Shoebox Float Contest. My mother, Ruth Hunt, loved children. And my dad, Walter Skeet Hunt, gave many years to Gulf Coast Carnival Association. It was one of his wishes for children to have a part in Mardi Gras, because you know all things going on and kids are just catching, but this, they're part of Mardi Gras. Some of her wishes came true as she began the children's marching parade, and then we did the Shoebox Float Contest. My sister, Susan Hunt, and I make sure these events continue. Today, we're here to recognize and honor winners of the twenty-sixth annual Shoebox Float Contest. Sorry, my back is to you. The sponsors of the contest are Berry's Uplift Auto Parts, Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, Biloxi Public Schools, the city of Biloxi, the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum, David N. Harris Jr. Law Firm, M.P. Design Group, the Butch Ostlet Foundation, and Jennifer Schmidt Holloway Real Estate Services. They're the ones that contribute to this event so that we can make sure our students or our children get their awards today. I would like to thank Sherry Bell, she's been very helpful, she's the director of the Biloxi Recreation Department, Angela Gutierrez, because after this is over, we're going down to the visitor center, and she's there, and she's helped us with that. Then we also have Ms. Hunt, which is my sister, and she's president of the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum. And Bill Crayman helped us, he's retired from the city of Biloxi, and he helped us and helped us at the parade. After the presentation, the winners and parents will be honored with a reception at the Biloxi Visitor Center, where their floats have been on display since January thirty-first. Everybody was very happy to see them when I brought them in. When they, you all get there, parents, they will be honored with a king cake and punch. And they will get, I gotta put that down.
No, it's okay.
And they're gonna get their Mardi Gras shirts. The shirts, okay? So they'll be able to wear that Mardi Gras day and have fun and catch lots of fish. Before honoring our winners, I want to recognize Mr. Rich Fern, he's right there, he's president of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, and then Tina Ross Simmons, right here, she's the executive director of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, David Harris, right there, he is the captain of the Gulf Coast Carnival Association, and Ms. Brisa Thomas, right here, director of the Coastal Mardi Gras Museum. Today, they're the ones that are gonna give you, or give the students or the winners their prizes. So, and after I talk a little bit more, then they'll take their little spot. I wanted to explain to you about how this all happened. Grades four, five, and six in the Biloxi schools, Nativity and Our Lady of Fatima, were extended an invitation to participate. At each school, the art teacher or an assigned teacher took on the responsibility of the contest. Those art teachers are teachers, I just wanna say their names. Ms. Cummings, Ms. Ewing, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Hoxsey, Ms. Smith, Ms. Sutherland, and Ms. Thomas. I'm not sure, I don't think any of the teachers are here today, but I just wanted you to know that they were the ones that were instrumental in making this happen and helped me with this contest. Okay, each overall, first place, second place, and third place, an honorable mention float contest winner will receive today a cash award, a certificate, a set of In Search, and this is In Search of Lost Legends, this is the theme of Mardi Gras this year. They'll receive one of these, and they will get a free pass to the Mardi Gras Museum for a whole year. Y'all wanna go with your families, you can go, and they get a koozie, a little koozie. The students did an excellent job. It was, it's just really unbelievable how good and talented they all are with their shoebox floats. The cash awards for first place are thirty dollars, second place will receive twenty, third place receives ten, and honorable mention will receive a five dollar. They also had the opportunity to participate in the children's marching parade, which was Saturday. And did we have fun? Yes, we threw a lot of stuff at a lot of people, we had a great time. And the winners rode on the tour train, so we really appreciate those people that took us on that tour train and helped us. Mayor Gillich, so he's gonna stand right here, and he's gonna give out the certificate. We've all practiced back there, we've practiced the shaking and how to take the certificate, okay? Because that's a little overwhelming when you get up here and you think you have to do that. So we have practiced, and then Mr. David, Mr. Rich Fern will be right here, and he will give you your money, okay? I don't know, are you gonna ask them to shake hands with you too? Oh, okay. So you gotta shake hands, probably, again. And then we have right here, you will receive your balloons, and that comes from the Gulf Coast Carnival, captain of the Gulf Coast Carnival. And he's gonna wear his hat, so you'll know exactly who he is, okay? All right. And then this very end, in this little bag, you got your koozie, you got your invitation, and your Mardi Gras from the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. Okay, are you gonna make them shake your hand? Okay, would you wanna shake? You gonna, you gonna make them shake hands?
Sounds like they might have their hands full.
All right.
There's a lot of shaking going on. It's a song.
All right, yeah, that's a song.
Let me, before you go on, I wanna say, the Hunt lady, there's so much energy and so much imagination, so I'm gonna give you a big round of applause.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My dad loved Biloxi, old time Biloxi, we both lived here all our lives, so this is one of the most important things. We knew what Mardi Gras was from the day we woke up, because there was all the stuff in our house, the shoes, the throws, everything. But anyway, now I'm gonna announce the winners for the twenty-fifth annual Shoebox Float Contest. I want y'all to please hold your applause, okay? Because I know you wanna clap for everybody, but hold your applause, and then, when their first placer are announced, you all can applaud, and they're gonna come up here, they're gonna get their picture taken. So you all will be able to take pictures of them real quick up there, then they'll go out that door, and they'll go sit back there and wait for you all to pick them up so you can take them to the visitor center. Okay, here we go, you ready? And I did this according to A-B-C order of school and grade, so that's why they're in this order, okay? They all know where they're supposed to stand, they all know. All right, here we go. Ansley Williams, fourth grade, Back Bay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
James McLauren, fourth grade, Gone Float.
Thank you, Tina.
Cameron Underwood, fourth grade, North Bay.
Here you go, here you go.
Joseph Fucking Annie, fourth grade, Our Lady of Fatima.
Underwood, oh.
Thank you.
Underwood.
Cameron, 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 hang on. She was right there, okay, hang on, we'll just, just go, we'll get it, go ahead.
We'll come back with you.
Sorry.
That's the most important thing, isn't it?
Congratulations.
Okay, ready? Caesar Lopez, fourth grade, Top Spar.
Sidney Jones, fifth grade, Biloxi upper.
Sidney Jones.
Zoe Andrews, fifth grade, Nativity.
Aria Fish, fifth grade, Our Lady of Fatima.
Lillian Alvarez, sixth grade, Biloxi upper.
And by the way, the last three, Zoe, Aria, and Lillian, all entered last year and won. So I just tell you, this is really a nice thing, they come back.
Brelin Rockhope, sixth grade, Our Lady of Fatima.
Now you can clap.
Good job.
All right, y'all need to move over.
And y'all need to get in a picture with them.
Wait till everybody gets in the picture.
I'm trying to find it. It was there, I thought.
I guess she didn't do one.
I don't know.
Gave them to them.
So what we need to do is...
Mom!
Good job, good job.
Okay, now we're on second place. All right, second place winners, are y'all ready? Okay, I'll call your name, and you'll see the mayor first, got it? Okay, here we go. Riley Mootine, fourth grade, Back Bay. Hayden Hall, fourth grade, Gone Float. Celine Smith, North Bay, fourth grade. Isaiah James, fourth grade, Top Spar.
Congratulations.
Don't skip.
Violet Gentry, fifth grade, Biloxi upper, and she won first place last year, so this is her second time return. Kelly O'Grady, fifth grade, Nativity, and this is her second time return. Brynlee McGrew, fifth grade, Our Lady of Fatima. Stephanie Hernandez Ramirez, Biloxi upper elementary. Zachary Broussard, sixth grade, Our Lady of Fatima. Now y'all can clap.
Missin' money?
Yep.
Oh, man, I mean, you know, I mean, these people, okay. I'll have to, what was her name, do you know?
She was the second to last.
Second to last.
Yeah.
All right, let's see.
Go, 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 see the last one, check.
All right, now we can get in there, get that picture.
Everybody get it, if you wanted it?
Good.
All right, now we have third place winners. All right, here we go. William Utamark, fourth grade, Back Bay. Gaylord Sivers, fourth grade, North Bay. Evie Lemare, fourth grade, Top Spar. Maddox Sumral, fifth grade, Our Lady of Fatima. Gaylord Brewer, sixth grade, upper elementary. Lucy Kavanaugh, sixth grade, Nativity, and last year she's been here three times, okay? Three times. And also Maddox Sumral was here last year too, okay? And then Abigail Hunter, sixth grade, Our Lady of Fatima. Now we can clap.
All right, they're gonna take your picture.
And now we have our honorable mentions, and we'll start with Ava Bigliano, gotta do it right. Fourth grade, Nativity.
Wait, wait.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Alena Roper, fourth grade, North Bay. Amelia Shute, fourth grade, Top Spar. Nathan Schwimmen, sixth grade, Our Lady of Fatima.
Right there, get your money.
This is Nathan Schwimmen, he's blessed. Two of them have not, you should not go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, I'll take all that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Stop your sandals, there you go, we can see it, you ready?
Yeah?
Good.
All right.
How you doing, man? You looking good?
I bet you think so.
How are you? That's me, I feel great. That's good, I feel the same way. Hey, we still surviving, you and I.
Nobody cares, just gotta get another one.
I'll finish my report, but as they clear out...
Thank you, Martha.
Great, great job again.
I love y'all.
All right. In closing my report, while they exit, I think we've got a couple more Mardi Gras notes. Senior citizens, Mardi Gras bash at the Snyder Center, eleven-thirty to one this Friday. Special needs, Mardi Gras bash, also takes place at the Snyder Center. And this weekend, the ninth annual Barclauxzi Parade is gonna take place at the Pointe de la Pavilion. Also, on the twenty-seventh, the March of Mayors, extra table, we're recollecting beans for the extra table, and can be dropped off at the Snyder Center, Lopez Public Safety, Biloxi Visitor Centers, and any fire station. Also, nominations are restarting for the Biloxi Sports Hall of Fame. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we have any departmental reports, we'll move to the council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, and I'll bring up a couple things that we went on the last meeting. I'd asked Pete about getting an opinion from Attorney General and the Ethics Committee on the, if we break into some of these ordinance in the city of Biloxi. So I was just wondering if you ever wrote a letter to them and got any information back? Because I still have some concerns with some of the things that we're doing, and I pass this on as strictly information to the council. You know, some of the things that, one thing is, Peter can't give you permission to break the law. You know, if I rob the bank on Monday, I don't have the right to rob it again on Tuesday. They gotta remember these things. You know, this is not the fifth grade, you don't get permission to break laws in the city of Biloxi. You know, so this is something we need to follow up with. Just like the last one, we deal with condominiums, which is garages, they're not condominiums, they don't live in them, you can't so divide them. Now, are they waterfront area or the PDI? PDI don't allow them, so do we have a split zone on that piece of property, or how do you handle that? Because I still haven't figured out what we actually passed the other day.
The underlying zoning on that property is waterfront zoning that allows boat and RV storage as a use by right. That's how they were able to get the permit to build a structure. They understood that they were gonna be asking for the PDI, which is an overlay. An overlay is not a zoning change. An overlay is an overlay, it overlays over the zoning that's underneath. And we've talked about this before, that what the ordinance charges me with is if somebody comes in and gets PD approval, any of the PDs, there's about a half a dozen, but if somebody comes in and gets PD approval, and they don't come back and get their site plan approved within two years, then the LDO charges me with coming back to y'all to have the overlay removed, and the property reverts to the underlying zoning. So the waterfront zoning does not go away because you have approved a PD on top of it, it's strictly an overlay, that's the way that it works.
So, and tax basically would be paying a high-end waterfront property.
Yes, sir. With the taxes, the taxes are based on the use, whatever goes, whatever the use is on the property, that's what evaluate, Robert Stenziano, that's the way that he calculates the taxes on it. You know, we get people all the time that will ask us, if the zoning is changed on my vacant piece of property, does that mean the taxes are going up? No, the taxes will remain the same, but it'll depend on what you build on that property, that's what's gonna determine whether or not your taxes go up, it's the use.
So in this case, they building these sheds, garages, they'll be taxed as waterfront?
They'll be taxed individually, yes, sir.
Right.
The, you have a vacant piece of property back there, where you were just getting land taxes off of it and nothing else. If they had built one individual structure on there, then they would have been evaluated based on that one individual structure. But the fact that they have twenty-seven individual boat storage units on that property means that the city will be getting twenty-seven individual taxes off of that property in addition to the land taxes underneath, so it's a win for the city.
And would they have to sprinkle these, or are they separated enough where they don't have to sprinkle them? They're separated?
They did not have to sprinkle them, and the reason they didn't have to sprinkle them is because each building is under ten thousand square feet, and the code that requires sprinkler, fire sprinkler systems only kicked in after you exceed ten thousand square feet. So that's the reason, that's the reason that there's three individual buildings out there right now.
And the other one was the one in Kenny's Ward that was built by the Blake. The variances had to come from the city council, yet we never voted on that, so how was that listed in a resolution that would grant them the right to build there? What, there's five acres of land, only the city council could approve that, nobody else?
No, that's not the way it works, Mr. Lawrence. A variance, all right, the plating commission serves two different roles. They serve as the plating commission, and then they serve as the zoning board of adjustments and appeals. As the plating commission, they are a recommendation body to the city council on everything except one thing, the only decision-making authority they have is on a residential subdivision, that's all. That goes to the plating commission for preliminary approval, and if they design everything the right way, then they go ahead and build it, and then they come back to the council for what's called final plat approval. The plating commission opens as a plating commission, they hear the cases where they serve as a recommendation body, and when they get through with that, they adjourn. Then they reopen as the zoning board of adjustments and appeals, and if you look in the LDO, what it, the zoning board of adjustments and appeals is a quasi-judicial body, and any appeal from that body goes directly to court. So, that's the difference between the two. This...
According to the LDO...
That's right.
Only the city council can approve that variance.
That's not, that's not true according to the LDO.
The LDO, I read, I don't know if you got another rule or else, but...
If you look at variances, variances go to the zoning board of adjustments and appeals, and then any appeal from that would go to court.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying, according to the LDO, only the city council can get approved, that big of a variance on anything, five acres and that, and that's what it states in the LDO. So I was just trying to figure out who gives them the right to do that.
The, it went, there was a public hearing, it went before the zoning board of adjustments and appeals, they heard the case, and they voted to approve it.
So, I disagree with you on that one. The other thing is, on the Broadwater, the FFO, they say we're having trouble with the CSX, because they're building on the railroads, right-of-ways, they're living on some of these homes, and they're affecting the night.
Yeah, we've been out there before, and I think they were, had a couple days...
Excuse me, Mayor, Mayor, if you, thank you, just pull the mic closer so the world can hear you, thank you.
I think, as of last week, they were supposed to be out of there, and I think Chris and you, give us an update on the clearing of that homeless encampments, is what you're talking about, right? Yeah.
Yeah, so they're in the process of still clearing, clearing the property. The property that hasn't been cleared is a CSX right-of-way, that hasn't been cleared yet, but as of this morning, there's some tents in there, but we haven't found anybody actually, actually staying in there. So I think probably the tents are abandoned, or they're either coming back in after dark, but we'll stay on that, and try to keep them moving on. I'm not, I'm not real sure where the people that were there went to, because we haven't found any new places where they've gone to yet.
And since you said that, Chief, they've been hauling people into Bag Bay Mission, the buses? Did you check that out and see who's doing that, and who's paying to send them to the Bag Bay Mission?
I can't find any evidence at all that, that people were dropped off. We got pictures of the bus, but Bag Bay Mission says that no busloads have come there, and my people have not been able to find any busloads that they're dropping off.
So what were they doing with the people, nothing? I mean, they went to the Bag Bay Mission, that hot tie, whatever it was, the bus, that's what we got the pictures of, so I was just trying to figure out, they sure didn't ride through there, that's not a bus stop. So I was just trying to find out what they were doing with those, the homeless, and where they was coming from.
We don't know that that was a fact, as far as what you, what was...
That's right, we have not, we've not found even Bag Bay Mission's telling us that nobody...
The LDO, I read, I don't know if you've got another rule or else, but...
If you look at variances, variances go to the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals and then any appeal from that would go to court.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying, according to our own LDO, only the city council can get approved that big of a variance on anything, five acres and that. And that's what it states in the LDO. So I was just trying to figure out who gives them the right to do that.
The, it went, there was a public hearing, it went before the Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals, they heard the case and they voted to approve it.
So, I disagree with you on that one. The other thing is, on the Broadwater, the FFO, they say we're having trouble with the CSX because they're building on the railroads, right of ways. They're living on some of these homes and they're affecting tonight.
Yeah, we've been out there before and I think they were...
Excuse me, Mayor? Mayor, if you, thank you. Just pull the mic closer so the world can hear you. Thank you.
I think as of last week, they were supposed to be out of there and I think Chris and you, give us an update on the clearing of that homeless encampments is what you're talking about, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so they're in the process of still clearing, clearing the property. The property that hasn't been cleared is a CSX right of way, that hasn't been cleared yet. But as of this morning, there's some tents in there, but we haven't found anybody actually, actually staying in there. So I think probably the tents are abandoned or they're either coming back in after dark. But we'll stay on that and try to keep them moving on. I'm not, I'm not real sure where the people that were there went to because we haven't found any new places where they've gone to yet.
And since you said that, Chief, they've been hauling people into Back Bay Mission, the buses? Did you check that out and see who's doing that and who's paying to send them to the Back Bay Mission?
I can't find any evidence at all that, that people were dropped off. We got pictures of the bus, but Back Bay Mission says that no busloads have come there and my people have not been able to, to find any busloads that they're dropping off.
So what were they doing with the people? Nothing? I mean, they went to the Back Bay Mission, that hot tire, whatever it was, the bus? That's what we got the pictures of, so I was just trying to figure out, they sure didn't ride through there. That's not a bus stop. So I was just trying to find out what they were doing with those, the homeless and where they was coming from.
We don't know that that was a fact as far as what you, what was...
That's right, we have not, we've not found even Back Bay Missions telling us that nobody has dropped off busloads of people there. So we're still, still looking at trying to figure out if that's taking place.
Okay, and the traffic they had at the meth plate, the methadone, they're still doing a lot of sales in the parking lot? Have you been on top of that one?
We have, we have not had any complaints from there as recent, recently, and they're still doing business. But we've not had any complaints.
They probably won't get any complaints, they're doing their sales. Methadone ain't no different than the drugs they're on. It's just another drug to get off of drugs. But they, do the same thing, it enhances them, don't do it much better. But they do the same deal, they dealing us in the parking lot selling. So I mean, I just figured we need to be aware of that. Thank you. Thank you, Martha.
All right, thank you, Mr. Guines.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sizel. First, I want to thank the chief, I saw them guys cleaning up the homeless area that we have by Dr. Mason Historical Site. I see them getting in there, cleaning it out, so appreciate you and y'all, you guys going back there. I want to get with Walt after the meeting, talk to him about some of the areas that we may not get to if we can do some shave, shaving paves in some of those areas, critical areas. Had a couple of people calling about that. With the mayor, Gulf Coast Produce, right along the railroad tracks, they're asking if they can, they're having some issues with the streets there.
Right.
Which is a public street and if we can just look at it, see what we can do to maybe do a little quick shave and pave to pretty that up. They got a lot of trucks going in and out of there. And last but not least, next week, we have one of our very own Cass Woods, her mother was part of the 888, the 2888 crew. They had made this great movie about the women post office. She is a descendant of it and she's going to be speaking about her mother at the Frank Gruich Center, 6 o'clock, Black History Program, next week, Tuesday. Thank you, that concludes my miss.
Thank you, Mr. Guines, Ms. Newman.
Yes, so why haven't we cleaned out the CSX property yet? It looks like it's actually gotten worse and my question is, if the tents are abandoned, why can't we just clean them out? Because the litter has gotten atrocious, even from Pass Road where they cleared that out. We need to clean it up ourselves and charge the landowner or something because it's just...
That's beyond me, I have no problems doing that, but that, that would be up to somebody else to make that decision. But as far as CSX not being cleared yet, they have a date that they had given. Honestly, I don't think CSX is going to clear that property. And I think we'll have to wait and see what, when that date passes as to what they're going to do and then if the city decides they're going to clean it or, and some of it actually lays on Cotton Forest property even though, you know, even though there's a right of way there. So we'll have to wait and see what's going to happen there. But honestly, I may be wrong, but I don't think CSX is going to come in and clear that property.
Well, legally questioning, I guess, why can't we just go in there and start clearing, clearing things up? Clearing up the trash, the tents and just...
I mean, we still would have to go through code enforcement for CSX and they probably will claim that they're not subject to anybody's laws but their own, but we still would take them through the process and, and see where that goes. I mean, we would still get it cleaned up and try to bill them for it and if we couldn't bill it through the normal procedure, then maybe we can bill it through another procedure, another contract we're working with them on. But I don't know where that stands as far as starting out any kind of code enforcement on CSX. I'm not, I don't know where that is.
Well, we've spoken to CSX, right? Surely they wouldn't deny us be permission on their property at all, right? And same with Cotton Forest?
I don't think they have any problem, any problem with us being on the property, but...
We could start. I mean, we could... I'll give it, Jerry, we'll start.
And I'm kind of talking about making them feel uncomfortable so they're, they're not wanting to stick around type of deal, you know? Just going on the property and saying, okay, we need to keep it moving. If they're not there, we need to clean up the trash. I mean, you know?
I think we would just take them through the normal...
That'd be a health hazard out there.
I think we just take them through the code enforcement process. I mean, they are, I mean, they feel like they're preempted from anything, but I don't know if they're preempted from garbage and trash and other hazards, so...
But I'm talking about the Broadwater property as well. I mean, from Pass Road is atrocious. It's only getting worse. I don't...
The report I got from your deputy chief earlier today talked about some arrests that were made for people that were trespassing.
We've made, we've made several arrests, sir.
What happens to those people?
They'd go through the normal process of being arrested, down and booked in, and then they either make bond or the judge releases them.
So...
Then they come back to the property or you don't know?
Well, we, that's, that's the whole purpose, is to make them go somewhere else and not come back to the property. That's what you were talking about.
There are several homeless people that have been seen driving vehicles in there. I'm just wondering about if we see vehicles in there?
If we're there, we stop them, yes, sir, and check them out. Some of them are homeless, some of them aren't.
Yeah, some of them are selling drugs, some of them aren't.
Some of them are whatever business they have, visiting other homeless people or whatever their business is.
And I assume those vehicles are registered properly and all?
So far, yeah.
Yeah, so far.
Yeah, if we can, need to even hire someone to clean up all that trash. I mean, it's so much trash, I can't even begin. Like, and as disgusting hazard as, if we can hire someone to clean up all of it, front back and then charge the property owners, that's what I'm looking at right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to get this on the record. There, there's a resident that contacted me off of Old Highway 67. The address is 11722. There's a dispute of, there's a gate and there's a dispute, is it a driveway or can they give anyone access? I think there's some property in the back that is, lack of a better word, maybe landlocked. And it appears that somebody has given the code or the key to that gate for others to access it and that, that hasn't been that way since this resident has called me. So I just need some clarity, if somebody can give me some information that may be useful to avoid any litigation or something of that sort. Maybe, maybe it can be resolved of who has access, why they have access or don't have access to that property. If somebody just get back to me on that, I just want to submit that for the record.
Repeat the address?
The address is 11722, Old Highway 67. It's near Eden Place and Paradise Lane, backs up to that area. Councilman Guines kind of reported some issues with CSX. I have a resident lives in my ward that owns a business near CSX and they're, they're getting some dialogue from CSX that they now want them to enter into a lease. So there's an issue of parking near the railroad tracks and a certain amount of distance and who's going to be responsible or is it going to be shared to put up barriers? I think that's what you're alluding to, Mr. Guines? Is that, is, am I accurate with that? Is this the same or different?
I think it's a little different, but go ahead.
A little different.
I'm very interested in it.
So I, I do have some additional information that I can forward to the administration if it's within our purview to solve it. It may be an issue between the owner and CSX, but if it's something we can clarify and assist with, that'd be great. If it isn't, I just need to give that information to the owner. I'll submit that after this meeting. And then the final thing, and this is on a personal level, this, this is in regards to my wife and I know many of you, the outpouring of prayers and wishing her well. I'm happy to report yesterday, I got her home, but before we came home, we rode down the beach. I know it was a little chilly, but it was beautiful, it was a beautiful cold Biloxi day. The Gulf was, the Gulf of America was shimmering, you know, out there and then we rode through some of the neighborhoods and just enjoyed that ride. But I just, I'm happy to report she's receiving home care at home. I think she's on her way of a good recovery, but I want to thank everyone, including Susan Hahn, who dropped off a care package today and the, my colleagues on the council for your well wishes and I just couldn't get to everyone that was reaching out, asking about how is Lisa doing? But I've tried to tell her, each and every one of you that have reached out, that y'all were wishing her well. So I'm going to leave it at that and any other inquiries, I'll certainly contact me. But if, if there's any other things that is outside, just respect for some of our privacy, I'll let, I'll let y'all know. But thank you for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine, a belated, bless you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you.
You may speak, thank you, sir.
Thank you, I just have a few things. On Cedar Lake Road, just north of the bridge, there's a sunken boat that's been there for, I don't know, probably a couple of years, and another boat that's abandoned. I know Councilman Glavine mentioned it some months ago. I don't know what we can do about it as the city, but I've had, of course, some complaints over time, but I just figured I'd bring it up again and if it's something we can do or address or get with another agency or somebody. But both boats have been there for a long time and one of them's completely sunk, the other one's just abandoned. It's been there floating, luckily it's floating still. Sidewalk, sidewalk in, on Woolmarket Road has finally, the work there has finally begun. They started yesterday and they actually were pouring some concrete today in a small section. So hopefully that will, at the rate they're going, the last two days, they've gotten a good bit done. So hopefully that's the pace they can keep and get that done pretty quick. But I was glad to see them finally start. Lastly, we don't have a lot of homeless in Ward 7, however, I get a lot of calls about homeless and I know we, it's brought up a good bit here in the meetings. I don't know what the issue is, like I've said before, but it is an issue. I know right now at Broadwater, that's a problem. It's been a continually problem. The police, it's not the police's issue, they're doing everything they can do. They're kind of the fall guy, I think. You know, a lot is beyond, I think homeless is beyond the police departments and what they can even do. But I think at some point, even the trash that was mentioned earlier, it's horrible. And again, summertime's coming up, that is what the, all the visitors, all the tourists come down here. I'm telling you, you get off the interstate just about at any exit in Biloxi, you see homeless and you see trash. We've got to do something. The city has to do something. And again, I don't know what that answer is. Maybe we need to start something, talk about it, meeting something with other agencies, other departments, other cities. But I think we can talk about it every week and get nothing accomplished and it's only getting worse, it's not getting any better. So at some point, we're going to have to step up, I think, and do something citywide and probably the whole coast. But that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I just have a couple of items. Chief, if you, just a quick reminder to Captain Payne, if he'd get me the list of the special events for the month of March coming up, I think they've already been through the process. Second thing is, Mayor, we'd mentioned now for a couple of months about a pay raise for directors. You said it'd be on the January agenda, then February, we have another meeting left next week?
We do, and I'm not prepared to make that recommendation yet, which is we're, you know, finally in our fifth period and sixth period, we're considering it. It's not, we're not sitting on anything, but we will, as well as some other things related to personnel services and that sort of thing.
Okay, I'm not hearing a yes in there for next month or maybe ever, is that correct?
Maybe next month. But at this point in time, I'm not prepared, right, at this point.
Any idea?
Yeah, in the next three weeks, four weeks, I would think.
Okay, we've, we've heard that before.
Well, you, I mean, I'm telling you now, you know, given the situation that we've been in, I mean, it, it, it's a financial situation, we want to be sure we're covered on what we, you know, the amount of people we're hiring or not hiring and some of the transfers of, of some of the budgeted wages and salaries. And so it's all wrapped up and I'm working with the people I need to work with in order to come up with a recommendation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments, so we'll move on to the public agenda.
Can I say something?
Sure, Mr. Lawrence.
Speaking of Broadwater, I noticed they moving the homeless. Are they still out there? They seem to be moving close to the greater southern, the people that live there. Are they still, how many we have still out there living? And I can't believe we can't move them off the property.
Yeah, as of right now, there's, there's none on the property living that we know of. We've gone out there, moved everybody out, everybody's gone. Now, there may be some that, that slipped back in there at night because there's still some tents and things set up out there. And we've been monitoring those, trying to catch somebody there, but as of right now, I was out there earlier myself today and I saw one person cut across through the property. It looked like they were just trying to take a shortcut, but as far as people living out there right now, there, there isn't any that we know of.
Well, we leave the tents out, they're going to go back. I mean, I'm like Dick, so we just need to take all the trash and tents up, period. Throw them in the dumpster, let them worry about that later. Could they just move around and go back home at night and sleep in the tent? Well, that still bothers the neighbors. And that's time for others to step up and do stuff like that. We got to protect the city and the people that live in the city. I don't care about CSX or anybody else, it's hard to deal with them, so...
Let me jump in and let Chief and some other folks understand that, you know, these are some new players here and you can look at the fresh backpacks, where they're coming from, the ones with dogs and ones, these are new folks. This is not your everyday, you know, 90-day people. So they're, they're new players every week and you can go underneath the interstate right now and see the new players. You can see some of the old players. So it's, it's dynamic and as David said, we don't know exactly what could do, what we would do and if we did anything, what would that push to another problem? We're just, you know, it's a conundrum. I think that we need to make a play and then be aware of what the consequences would be, whether it's legal or whether it's, you know, being viewed in a harsh light and we don't, we want to do what's right, I think, in all cases.
You know, that's what I was saying, I mean, what you got to do is take care of taxpayers and homeowners. That's our job.
That's the question, that's the question. How do you do that?
That's, that's our job to do that.
Yeah, it's our job too, to do it the right way.
We can't let homeless do what they want in the city of Biloxi. They can't live in tents, I don't care whose property they own, that's the law in the city of Biloxi. Somebody in town, others just step up and move them, get rid of them. I mean, it's just not getting any better, like you said, new players, I don't know, maybe that's where they're coming on the buses, who knows? I don't know where they're coming from, but I mean, that's a big old busload of them just, they dropped off, yeah. They're going to find a spot, they're going to find a place to eat. I mean, I know that, but I'm just saying, we, we let this go on too long, it's just something that we just got to cut off, take the best shot and do it, right off the bat. And I was doing actually one other thing, Mayor, on, we had Comfort Place in Jenkins Lane in Quavers where they had to be paved because people wanted to add houses to those streets. Have you looked at putting the money to pave, extend Jenkins Lane, pave Comfort Place?
Again, it's on the list that we've kind of prioritized, so we're working, working through that, working through that. Christie will give you an update on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. We'll move to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll allot up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. Each individual's permitted up to three minutes to speak. At the end of three minutes, you'll hear this sound. There you go. And your time is concluded. That being the case, when I recognize you, please come to the desk here. You'll need to pull the microphone close and speak clearly, state your name so that the clerk can record your name accurately. Anybody on my left, your right, Ms. Campan?
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Campan. I'm a resident of Biloxi and the managing editor at WLUX News. I'm here as a citizen and as a journalist today to share my concerns about proposed changes to the ordinance outlining how the city handles public records requests. It's item A on the policy agenda introduced by Mayor Gillich and has its first reading here today. The proposed ordinance offers no explanation as to why the administration believes changes are necessary, nor does it explain why the city would make changes that contradict the Mississippi Open Records Act. For your convenience, I have copies of the Mississippi Open Records Act, statute 2561, for the mayor's chief administrator as well as each council member. The state makes clear public records are public property and any person shall have the right to inspect and obtain public records. State law... and any person shall have the right to inspect and obtain public records. State laws set specific timetables for complying with records requests, which your amendment seeks to remove. The changes also remove the requirements for a specific explanation when the city cannot provide records in a timely fashion. Instead, you replace it with vague, open-ended language about consulting with legal counsel and the need for more time to produce records. Mississippi's open records law specifically prohibits a public body from adopting procedures to produce or deny records later than seven working days from the date of the request. The Mississippi Ethics Commission unanimously upheld that Public Records Act is clear on this point and that a public body has a duty to either produce records or written denial in a timely manner. These timeframes are not extended when there's a request to send it to legal counsel for review. The open records laws are commonly referred to as sunshine laws. Their goal is to promote transparency and accountability. Because this issue is of vital importance, not just to journalists, but to citizens, the citizens of Biloxi, I urge you to hold a public hearing and hear from your constituents before limiting access to public records. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Campan. Is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? My right, your left. There's no one. Anybody on my right, excuse me, my left, your right, Mr. Silvestro?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob. I think just by someone speaking right there and when you guys all brought up the problem of homeless and you could have heard a pin drop in here, pretty much is the answer to the question. We just move on from here. I'm willing to volunteer, bring some people together as if it never happened. No past, no feelings, no blaming anybody, nothing. But you cannot involve anyone in the group that benefits from more of problems coming here. It's that simple. My neighbors are 100% about being safe and they vote for the people here. But some people making decisions or not elected. Any not-for-profit, anybody else that make, that does not see that moving forward, we need to work on this problem. I walked into the woods. I paid some of the homeless. They came out and picked up the trash. I've had homeless people come to me and say they could be lying. Hey, I got a voucher from the VA and from other people to get housing. When I got there, there was two other homeless people living there. I don't know what to do with all this. That's way above my league. But I can tell you that if I was the owner of a rental property or that land and I finally got a bad tenant out, I wouldn't let the tenant back in. So I'm thinking the Broadwater property is not going to be a place for people to be and I want the city to grow. And I've spoke with people who want to invest and are. I'm nobody. But they're concerned and I think moving forward, if we actually put some people who have boots on the ground, maybe a policeman who works on the area, maybe somebody at the shelter who's actually feeding people, they have some great ideas, you know. And I've learned of two people that are in the homeless area, we made them a part of our community. They've actually felt like they're members of the neighborhood. And I found out they burned every bridge in their life. You can't even believe what they did. But, you know, as far as my dad taught me, the difference between a drug addict and a substance abuse person or a drunk and an alcoholic is how much they make or if they have a job. So they're not, they're just, whatever, I'm rambling. But look at my neighborhood. We had a dog lost yesterday. We had 17 neighbors out there with the Public Wards Department, which does a great job, chasing this damn dog, which it's a homeless dog. You never, there's no reason Chase is gonna be homeless. But all these people come together. People are riding their bikes, they're walking. Look at all the permits pulled to my neighborhood. Look what's starting to happen. With that said, I'm sitting here, I have no idea what I'm doing, but maybe that's why God brought me here. And in the last note, I just came to me, I want to thank my wife Lori for having the strength to be able to ground me and lift me up at the same time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to speak? Mr. Eldred?
Good afternoon. My name is George Eldred. We have a place on Jasmine Street in the greater Biloxi neighborhood. I happen to be Bob's neighbor as well. And I just want to confirm that the homeless are still there. The trash is still coming. I've watched. A lot of it happens after lights go down. You can watch them coming with the bicycles, picking the trash up from the curbside, waiting. They drag it into the woods on bicycles. They, and it's not just trash at the side of the street. We've been the victim. We have several houses in that neighborhood. They've ripped out air conditioning units, tore them completely out from the back of the house. We've been broken into many times. It's an ongoing problem. You can hear the yelling and screaming out there at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, the occasional gunshot. And that still is going on. That hasn't, as earlier as this morning, we were still listening to them out there. The fires that they start. And it's not just on the old school property. It is on railroad tracks. And there's a substantial amount of them on the railroad tracks. They have full kitchens set up. They have, it's just amazing what's out there. The human feces that is spread from one side to the other. When the bucket fills, they take it out on railroad tracks and dump it. It's bad. It needs to get straightened out and I don't have the answer for it. I wish I did. But what I can tell you is when, we had, we had a recent incident with a theft. We had the police come out because we do report it. And he happened to mention that he was looking for a handyman special. So we pointed him to a neighbor's house that was for sale. And he kind of laughed at us and said, I wouldn't live in this neighborhood. And when I, when he was asked why, he stated because of the drug problems. That speaks volumes as to what's there and what's going on. Well, I thank you for your time. I also would like to say, some of the city employees that I've met, Water Department, Tom Grazio, Sewer, I could be mistaken which one it is, excellent workers, go out of their way, helpful, bend over backwards to correct and straighten problems out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Anybody else on my left, your right, Mr. Deroche? Good afternoon.
I'd like to start with Dixie. That idea about the canine was a good idea in the retirement. There are protocol and procedures for that, and I'm sure the chief knows that. It's out of respect that we do that. Anytime that a police officer is killed in the line of duty or when he's promoted, it ought to be a mandatory call for every police officer in that department within reason to show up because you can't leave that, the city unprotected. I think the police are doing an outstanding job and I really love living here because I know I can count on them when I need them. Regarding the apartments that are either proposed or will be built by Rue Pettibod and Center Stage in that area, Dr. Tisdale, how much are they gonna charge for rent for those units?
That I don't know. My assumption is market rate. Yeah, I'm getting it head nod, yes.
Does anyone know what the market rate is right now? Because I sure don't.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll just put that note and maybe I'll talk to you another time or I'll be back. Regarding the homeless situation, those of us that were in law enforcement know that you're not gonna solve all the crime all the time and that you sometimes just move it to the next corner. And it's like a controlled riot. You try to keep it under control, but sometimes you can only do so much. And I'm sure the resources that they have are working hard, especially with the homeless unit that you guys now have, which Gulfport ordered copy. And I don't know if you're talking to the chief over there or not, chief, but they could use some help. And lastly, I would just like to say that I think that the city council is doing a great job. Over the years that I have watched you, especially Mr. Glavine, that water organ idea is a must for the city of Biloxi. That is a family-friendly tourist attraction. And you guys have been to Croatia and have seen it. So you know how much it can apply and generate revenue and tourism dollars here. That's all I have to say. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deroche. Anybody else wish to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Hey, I'm Ginger Collins. I live on Kensington Drive in Biloxi. I'm in George Lawrence's ward. Thank you, George, for good representation. I really appreciate it. I appreciate you hearing our voice about the trees, specifically the Gruych tree. So now that I'm becoming aware of, of the fate of some of these trees, I'm getting more involved. And I came on very late because I didn't know about it. And so I went to the tree committee meeting last, the last one this month. And there's really no way at present to get the word out to the public, is what I'm, what I'm hearing them say. They're required to, is that right, Mr. Creel? They're required to?
Post signs.
Post signs. And that's all? Is that right? Okay. So if someone like me who lives on this end doesn't just happen to pass by a beautiful tree like the Gruych oak or the ones down on the property on the beach, and don't see the sign, which is approximately this big, by the way, I think that's ludicrous, number one. I mean, it should be, there should at least be a banner saying what it's about, you know. You have to pull over to read it. That's a little bothersome to me. And if I don't drive down there, I'm not gonna know about it, you know? Nobody's gonna know about it. And that's not very transparent, quite frankly. It needs to be transparent. We need to know. We don't need to find out, get all upset at y'all because of what happens. We just need to know so that we're in on it, okay? And what I'm hearing is it's difficult to get that out. Are you kidding me? You got the B News, you got the B Alert, B Mail. You got it all at your fingertips. So, and maybe I don't understand how that works. It's actually very possible. But we need to use those resources and get the citizens involved in this process and maybe other processes too. But that's my, my main concern right now. And I'd like y'all to consider how to keep us informed because I understand that a person can apply for a permit to remove a tree and it has to be resolved within 10 days or seven days.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you.
Is anybody else that wishes to address the council in the room? All right, there is no one, so this concludes citizens' comments. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A, please. This is a first reading.
Ordinance to amend the code of ordinances pertaining to public records and Mississippi uniform crash reports.
I'll entertain the motion.
I'll move it.
The motion by Mr. Glavine is there, second? I'll second. That Mr. Guines? Second by Mr. Guines. Again, this is a first reading.
Counselor, could I make a statement just for clarification as well? May be helpful to the, to the public. We are, we're modifying or we're trying to clean up language in two of the sections of our ordinance. The ordinance before this one that we're not changing states, section 291, adoption of state law, the Mississippi Public Records Act of 1983 is hereby incorporated in this article by reference. And each and every definition, term, and condition set forth therein is adopted for use, for the use of the city. So some of the things I heard about, this is being taken out. That 14-day rule is in the state statute already. So I'd be happy to try to clean the language up a little bit. I'd be happy to call Ms. Campan and talk to her about it. But we're not trying to take any of the law away. We're just cleaning up what's there. This law is already in the statute. The statutes are already kind of thick and deals with a lot of different issues. We weren't gonna just repeat the entire statute in our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question, Dr. Tisdale. Can we have a highlighted copy of the changes for the next meeting?
Yeah, it's kind of marked through, struck through and added. Basically, the last sentence, it's, you know, talked about where records are legitimately not immediately available for reasons, which is kind of ungrammatical. So we're changing that to if the records requested are unable to be produced within the seven days. So, I mean, the 14 days is still gonna happen either way. It actually puts a burden on us to get the records and the response out within seven days, get it out as quickly as possible, which is what we do. I don't have any problem adding 14 days in if that'll make somebody a little more comfortable. But we can deal with that next week.
Anything else, Mr. Guines? Mr. Glavine?
All right. So to bring some, a little further clarity, this action that we're putting on the table to discuss at our next meeting, we're not trying to postpone this to our advantage indefinitely. There is a recourse for someone requesting public records and we can't.
Yeah, the statute already requires 14 days if it's producible. I mean, there are things where sometimes we're gonna need more time. We got, we got a record request last month for every document between the city and Center Point Energy for the last six years. We cannot produce that in 14 days. So we had to write a letter and say, it's gonna take us some time to even give you an estimate of what it would be. We did that within the 14-day period.
All right. So there's no filibuster going on here, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Counselor.
All right. I'm sure this will generate more discussion at the next council meeting, but I appreciate your comments, Mr. Abyid, to kind of clarify what's trying to be accomplished.
Can I ask a few, Lawrence? One question. The lady from WLX, what are you doing to them that they can't get records? That she makes these statements on the ethic committee and stuff like that?
My interpretation of what she said was that this would prevent them getting records within 14 days. And the statute already provides for 14-day requirement if it's a simple turnaround request. So in our ordinance, before this, what we're changing, in our ordinance, it says, we adopt the entire Public Records Act as it exists in the state code. And that's where the, that's where the 14 days is as well.
Says on the state law?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I believe that's it. We'll move on. We'll move on to item B. Again, this is a first reading. If the clerk would read item B.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances pertaining to Parks and Recreation Commission.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Is that Mr. Guines? Is there a second? By Mr. McGilvery. Again, this is a first reading. And there will be no action at this meeting. That brings us to the consent agenda.
To move.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Glavine. All right, Mr. Lawrence.
On F, Mike, the Sanger. This is an additional $34,000 for?
This is the additional plaster work that's around the stage. We did the first phase that's directly on the stage and this is where the two balconies are that kind of come across the roof. We're doing some plaster repairs there as well.
So this money come from where?
This is actually in the Capitol Projects budget already.
And what is the timeframe we're trying to open the Sanger? How much longer we have?
It's depending on what the archives and history, bird dogging every inch and every little piece of repair. It depends on them.
On the L, the Henderson County money, we have that money dedicated. What are we doing that in the harbor? Are we building something? Or repaying something? That's the money received from the county. So we have it allocated for.
This is the one mill.
Yeah.
Mill that we get. And this is the true-up for last year. Eighty-five thousand is just a true-up. We assume a certain amount of money upfront. And in order to make it at the end of the year.
Equivalent to a mill.
True-up to make it an even mill in this particular year. This week, another $85,000 in order to make it a full mill.
Yeah, I understand what we receive from them. My question was, do we have any fund to do something certain?
There are projects that are spread to use that millage as we receive it. As we receive it, there'll be Capitol Projects related to ports and harbors.
I mean, I'm sure it's all for handling anything in the harbor, taking care of stuff in the harbor.
Is what's stated in this, pier repairs. Pier repairs.
Yeah, another one on S, with the audit group. I know last time we had a lot of material misstatements and stuff like that. The whole bunch of them, 80 of them, something y'all corrected. Do we still have any other problems? I noticed it for 24. The $58,000 plus the extra money for Mema and Freema. But I mean, we have clarified all the stuff we had before. The problem we had, this misstatement. Say again?
Will not have those extra programs, those four single audit programs this year.
Well, what I'm trying to figure out.
Done every two years. So that's why the additional ABL charges were because of the four additional programs.
But have we eliminated the problems we're having on the misstatements?
We just actually reported it every two years. It was time for us to do it. So we'll have two years for the programs of that size come up.
It should be faster.
So will they have an audit ready for this year for the budget time?
Works on it right now.
Yeah, I mean, we've got to make sure we have it so we know where the numbers at. You know, everybody needs to know that. And on DD, that's the Point Cadet Shoreline. Is this something new or is this something we finishing up?
This is something new. This is that work that we're doing, doing the living shorelines of where the little spit is, where the oak tree is. This is the first phase of that. We're going to be doing some work out there, planting some grass, cleaning it up, a bulkhead, cleaning it up out there.
This is Gomez funded.
Gomez money that's been.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About four years, I think.
I'm just trying to figure out what we are doing, but that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. And on EE, N K's Brothers, you know, that's my favorite subject. So what are we doing here? Here comes N K's Brother Assaultman Group.
Not me, I wear the white hat. So, Councilman, the question on change order EE, we are still having difficulties with getting CSX Railroad to provide a flagger. We've emailed them a few weeks ago and they responded in their email that they are going to try to get a flagger within five weeks. We, due to the amount of work that's required, we recommended to, we recommend to the city to award N K's an additional 60 days through April 3rd, give time for the CSX to get a flag present, if they do get one here, and to do the work within the CSX right of way. If we cannot get CSX to provide us a flagger by then, then I'm going to recommend to the administration that we just de-scope the work from their current contract and put it into another contract for the work to be done at a near-future date.
Those are the options we have?
Yes, sir. We're going to give it one last shot with CSX. I'm not sure if Kristy, with her Pops Ferry projects, had any luck with flag. Yeah, their flaggers, just not present right now. They're still all out east.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to clarify that.
Yes, sir. Oh, and Councilman, on another subject regarding the fencing you had called me about.
Yeah.
We pulled up all the service requests and I spoke with the Can't Be Beat Fence, that's the subcontractor. She said in regards to 227 Crawford Street, the fence the customer had is a custom fence. It's no longer made, so she had to special order it and she expects to arrive late April or May. There were three other fences listed on our service requests that we're aware of. She said she was unaware of those. We, those service requests go out to N K's as soon as we get them. So we're going to re-remind them that they have at least four known fencing issues within that St. Michael's project.
One that's not made anymore, they replace it with something similar, what'd they do?
She said she had to get a special customer order. So I guess it's going to be similar to the style at least at that address.
I'm glad you got all four of them listed again. Let them know that too, that they hadn't finished until they get all four of them done.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
May I ask a question real quick? Walt, just.
Yes, sir.
The flagger you mentioned. Flagger as in flagging traffic?
Whenever you do work within the CSX right of way and you got equipment or machines, the flagger is there to really stop the contractor if there's a known train coming. It's more of that kind of an issue so that you don't have interference with equipment or men or materials within the CSX right of way.
But it's just one person that pretty much does that, one or two people, I guess? Out there on a job site?
I've only seen one or two, no more than two on my projects when I've done some very large railroad projects with bridges over them. We've had quite more than that. It just depends on.
Right, okay. And that is CSX's responsibility to provide them?
Yes, it's their right of way.
All right, I was just curious. Just five weeks to have somebody come and flag traffic seems a little absurd. I know they're busy elsewhere, but it's not your problem. I was just curious because I wasn't aware.
Actually, Councilman, it's been at least, at least on our project, it's been since Hurricane Helene and the other hurricane hit, that's when CSX had to push all their efforts out to the east. So from that time since, we've been unable to get flaggers.
Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines.
Oh, I don't have anything.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I just have a question on W. This is the Craft Beer Fest special event at Kessler Park. Is there a projected revenue or economic impact on this? Or we're just promoting an event, cosponsoring it, assuming it's going to bring hotel nights, people to the restaurants, people to this event?
Right, it's a, it's a city-sponsored event in the stadium. And the only, we don't collect any money. And the only fees are fees that are paid, that they're paid for a cleanup.
All right, is this contained in the park itself or is it?
Inside the park.
Okay. I think it's a good event. They used to have a similar event at the Coliseum, on the Coliseum grounds and it was very well attended and real popular. I hope this can grow in popularity and maybe even expand to a.
The fourth or fifth year.
Yeah. So hopefully it can expand, maybe even be a, you know, if it grows big enough, we can have it on the street as well and have many, many more vendors. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine, Mr. Shoemaker.
I just one thing. H and I, it's, and really I just have some comment. It's equipment, lawn equipment we're purchasing for Public Works. I'm all for purchasing new equipment. I think all departments need reliable, good equipment they can use every day, regardless of the department. However, there's no one here for me to comment to from Public Works. So, Ms. Mayor and Mr. Leonard, hopefully you guys, this year, especially with grass season coming up, they've got a ton of new equipment now. And I know it's going to be that they're shorthanded, but we've got to do better this year than we did last year in grass cutting. It was terrible, horrible. I receive complaints multiple times a week. So please, we've got new equipment, whatever we need to do to get Ward 7 grass mowed and weed eat it. And that's all I have.
Mr. Councilman, let me jump up to and just say that, you know, we've extended a lot of contract, you know, hourly workers that I think about 10 or so that we've continued even from the last crunch. So it's noted that we need to keep things happening, mowing.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I just have one item. This refers back to item DD, which is the Point Cadet Shoreline. And I would just note that we also accepted the bid for alternate one. And I think that's an additional roughly $247,000. Is that Gomez money also?
Yes.
That's all, it's all Gomez money.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. That I think concludes all our questions. We've got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, consent agenda as presented. All in favor? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. And I'll ask if there are any exceptions. Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
None.
Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker? And I have none. So there are no exceptions. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel, it's all yours.
Okay. Item A, H.L. Brand Limited Partnership, 1980 Todd Cove. That case has been resolved. Item B, H.L. Brand Limited Partnership, 1981 Todd Cove. That case has been resolved. Item C, J. Johnson, 201 Elmer Street. That case has been resolved. Item D, Mock Six Holding LLC, 2099 Southern Avenue. This property is still in violation.
So it's just in the state of disrepair or?
Trash and litter, yes, sir.
Trash and litter, okay. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of Mock Six Holding LLC or the property at 2099 Southern Avenue? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item E, 285 Hickory LLC, 285 Hickory Road. That case has been resolved. Item F, Lucy L. Lee, 312 Bowen Street. That case has been resolved. Item G, Cassandra Hicks, 11965 Sandbar Lane. This property is still in violation.
Is that, is that an occupied structure or is?
This, she actually filed an appeal to go to the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And that hearing was held a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, the Building Board of, it's part of the code enforcement process. Whenever we cite somebody for an unsafe, unsanitary building, they have the right to file an appeal within 10 days. She went before the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals and she offered no remedy. She just said, I don't have the money right now to do anything with it. Please give me more time. And ultimately, the decision was we're going to have to move forward with the demolition and it'll be added to the tax rolls and that'll give you time to come up with the money to pay your taxes for next year. So it's, this is in really bad shape. I don't know if Councilman Shoemaker has actually seen it, but the floor has collapsed on the inside and we're getting reports about kids and animals going in and out of the structure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Creel. All right, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. And it is extremely hazardous, extremely. And this has been going on, and I think Mr. Creel would testify to this as well, well over a year. I mean, I think last January of '24, I think she had been given time and it's been, here we are, just over a year and nothing, nothing has been done. As a matter of fact, it's way worse, obviously. So, yeah, I think definitely it, we need to do something with it if we can.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Is Cassandra Hicks or anyone representing Ms. Hicks to speak on this matter at 11965 Sandbar Lane? There being no one, this hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine agenda.
To move.
By Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
By Mr. Guines. I'm going to go out on a limb here and ask Mr. Rhodey to come forward.
Bring them checks. It's all about money now.
All right, good afternoon again, Council. Right now, since we last spoke, the current anticipated funding that we'll receive from Mema is 1.14 million. It may be an additional $600,000 added to that or that will come after the 1.14 million. It's related to the reconciliation change orders that the council previously approved a couple of council meetings ago. Our last conversation with Mema was Thursday of last week and their accounting group is reviewing it for recommendation to Mema. Not in the system yet, but hopefully by our next council meeting, it will at least be in the Mississippi PA system making its way down to us. So it's 1.14 million.
Walt, you might want to explain a little bit about this reconciliation change orders. They get paid for what they put in the ground. We pay for them as they put it in the ground. Then at the, at the cycle, you said the additional, if they call for in the plan is 500 and we wind up putting 1,000, that 500 remaining is part of what we're trying to reconcile. We actually installed 1,000 and so they're going to give us for the 500 because we couldn't install the 5, over the 500. So it's sort of a, we've already paid for it. We just want to get repaid for it at this point in time. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Of what reconciliation is?
It's just when you've got plans and you've got a number of quantities and the plans will lay so many linear feet of pipe. If for some reason you have to go additional linear feet of pipe or maybe you've changed out a type of pipe for another style and then that caused you to overrun. Those overruns, the state won't pay us, reimburse the city. We have to pay the contractor to install it. But the state will not reimburse the city until such time we show the state that there was a cause and need and that it's within this approved scope of work. So that's why it takes a little long for them to review.
But we've already installed it. I mean, it's already paid for. So we're just trying to get.
Just reimbursement.
Right.
But we pretty much stay up even with them. I know we put out the money and then they pay.
60 days ahead.
Right. As long as we stay on top of it, we normally get the money. It might take a little time, but I mean, it's just something we got to check on every week.
And it's just a good.
The point was, this reconciliation is not reconciled, it's not something nefarious. It's something that has been installed. We're just trying to get approval for the stuff that was actually put in the ground or on top of the ground.
Or whatever.
Whatever, exactly. There always money because.
Thoughts has money.
That's right, exactly.
All right, thank you, Walt.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. Any other questions about the routine agenda? All in favor of the agenda is presented under the routine agenda? That's approved on a 7-0 vote? vote? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, it's approved 7-0.